All right, it's nine o'clock. We'll open up for our August 4th, 2015 work session. If you please silence or shut off your cell phones, would appreciate it. You please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, anybody know when the pledge of allegiance was first composed? Most people would think back at the start of the country, right? The key phrase is "one nation" uninvited. It was composed after Civil War.
But didn't have it revision in the 30s, didn't it, Ken?
In God we trust, by truth and I believe.
So we do have a revised agenda. We have a deletion, the block line adjustment application. Still has work to be done. We have an addition of ordinance 104, attachment A correction for today. Denise or Ken, do you have any other additions or deletions?
I have no other changes.
We're just going to cover just for quick on this road.
Yeah, you just stated that as an addition.
Okay.
Not that I wasn't listening, because I was focused.
Okay, so our nine o'clock is economic revolving loan program application. We have Ann and we have the seniors, or the community center, senior center here. So who wants to come up to the hard seat?
I can just introduce the topic and just stay back here. As you guys know, there's been some restructuring at the Silver Center and some different financial things that they had to incur some debt on. So they approached, I think commissioners at different times, probably individually, about some type of financial help. We have the Economic Development Business Loan Program that has an application and financial statements and things like that. With this being an agency and the collateral rules being a little bit different for them, I feel like this process is going to be better served just with some open dialogue and then come up with some kind of loan terms that everyone agrees to, get that document approved and signed off. So with that, you should have some documents that has their application, although it's, you know, like I said, it kind of fits this purpose, maybe not the best. What I've done is just drawn up a few different schedules based on different loan amounts and different interest rates, and I summarized it on one page so we can just see the payments.
Thank you.
So know that this, this is just an idea. Obviously, the interest rate change or the term changes. We can come up with something else. So with that, I will turn it over to the senior center, maybe to give some more information on your status.
Sure.
Good morning, it's well?
Well, I contacted Ann regarding the loan some time ago. And originally, we were looking for funds to pay off our line of credit that we have with the US Bank. And it was, the full amount was to cover a bully case that we had. So we had to borrow money to pay this off, and we're making payments. And of course, there's a pretty substantial interest rate with that. And we had the line of credit open, and we've had to use it a couple of times to make payroll. So it's grown from the $25,000 which we took out the first time to it's just under 50, it's 47 something. We've been making $1,100 a month payments on that. So we're making our payments, but you know, we're paying the interest, and that's part of why we were coming to you, to save some money there. We've done some restructuring and we're in a much better financial place now regarding payroll and all that. I stumbled across, before our last board meeting, I stumbled across a document that had been presented, and in the month of November, they were down $17,000. I mean, they were in the hole if you could want to say it like that.
Senior associate.
Yes, looking at what the payables were versus the income. We have turned that around significantly since then. We, our payroll was less, and we just cut, you know, any fluff is gone from the budget as I speak. So we're really working towards getting into positive. And we did have a month, June, where we had some money left after payroll and all of those were paid. So that was awesome. That was, still in the right direction.
So your projected budget, or you add in your budget, you go January to enter July 1 through?
Yeah, we have a fiscal year, same as you can.
Okay, and so your adopted budget for this year, the year that we're in now, and your projections on your revenue and expense are looking good?
Yes, yes.
Did you bring a copy of the budget for us? Did you get us a copy? Okay, that would be very much.
I had a little trouble with my, the QuickBooks versus the Excel program, so breaking it out wasn't my test.
Yeah, we'll make a decision tomorrow, but if you bring it to us and produce it this afternoon.
Okay.
So that's really good news that you say in June, everything is in the black. July and, well, August, they just start July, the same.
It looks good for July, too. I don't have the total numbers yet.
So if we were to consider this on, in any one of these, that would reduce your monthly payment by quite a bit, which would free up some more money to make sure that you keep operations going smooth and you're on the track right now for the year in the black.
Do you foresee any specific loan expenses in the future that could knock you out of that routine of being in the black?
Well, we have some serious maintenance issues that we need to address. The paint on the building, the insurance company is actually saying you need to get some paint on that, especially on the south side, by the way, adjacent to the post office there, and the sunroom and the windows, and, but that wouldn't be an emergency kind of thing. That'd be something we planned for, but I think it's something we need to be.
Sort of like the county, we have a lot of deferred maintenance that we finally able to start plugging away a little bit each year. And I think on your deferred maintenance, that's where you're going to be too. As dollars become available, you'll start plugging way up.
Some of that stuff, you might be able to get some either volunteer or community service. Scraping paint is pretty easy. Those are the nights we're going to help, you know, I suppose, to save cost.
So if we were to consider this, this loan amount, what is, what is our comfort zone for you to not go back to your, you or the, I don't know if the board approves, you go to the line of credit or whatever. What, what is our comfort zone as being the lender, that you're not going to have another $50,000 out on line of credit? And still over the county, too. Is there a process? Does your board have to approve, go into line of credit? Is that a decision by the director? So what is? And whenever we become the lenders, then we have exposure of who we lend to maybe going back into the hole far enough that they're not able to do both payments. So what do you see, and I know you're new, you've been on five months now or four months, whatever it is. So is, do you guys have policies that before you go to line of credit and stuff like that?
I don't believe it's a written policy, but it was something that was addressed at a board meeting that that's absolutely not an option. It's for an extreme emergency or, you know, something with the building catastrophic happens, but it's not an operational kind of way to handle it. Part of the thinking behind using it for payroll was the billing hadn't been kept up. When I took over, we were, you know, there was a lot of catch-up. And being brand-new, I didn't even know some of the things we were to be billing for. So that's become, you know, part of the routine, that, so we're catching up, catching up. And we have a couple of other things that we're discussing, a transportation program and some other streams of revenue that we're really hopeful about, so.
So it sounds like internally, you're working on the policy or whatever that would be, but you're, basically you're telling me is that you're pretty comfortable that your line of credit would only be used for emergencies and this would help relieve your debt structure, and this would be a positive thing as you go forward as the director?
Yes.
I, that, that's very good. I mean, that's, that's just a worry, to go back into that kind of debt.
I was in, in front of the board of directors a week or so ago, and they have some very conscientious members on that board, so I'm comfortable in that sense.
So what Ann gave to us is three options. $50,000, no interest, $833 a month, $40,000 at .54%, $675 roughly a month, and $35,000 at 5.83 a month in interest. Looking at your application and hearing what you said, it looks like you needed minimum $47,000 and change, whatever it was. So I guess by tomorrow, you need the number that you want for sure. If it's 50, so that there's a little bit there, I'm not sure if we would be opposed to that or in favor, or if it's just exactly what it takes to pay off your line of credit, but we need to know that number. And I'm not speaking for you. I laid the three out there and then I just went straight to the $15,000 mark. But it sounds like that's where you need to relief from the whole line of credit. If you don't pay off the whole line of credit, then you're still not going with the interest rate that's higher.
Yes, and it kind of, ones that's taken care of, you just don't touch it. We're moving forward and making, I think it's.
Well, emergencies do come up, and if the board approves an emergency use of it, I would think, I'm not on your board or anything, that would be, you have to make business decisions at that time.
You said that you're making currently $1,100 a month payments?
$1,100.
$1,100. And the 50, if we might be 50, to example, that's $833. So you have $300 ahead right there. And you've been in the black, so that'd be another $300 in the black.
Can I say something?
Yes.
As a member of the board, I just want to say that, you know, Andrea's worked really hard in the six months she's been in the position and had a lot of ground to catch up on. The board's very supportive of the effort she's made. We want to ensure that the senior center is available for our senior population and the community at large. Appreciate you considering this loan to help us get through this period of time to get our funding streams put together. Andrea's also working with Ms. Casto for some training around grant writing. We're looking at some available grants to help us out with the building and some other things. So she's doing a lot, just, we had a lot, we have a lot and had a lot to do to get caught up. So just wanted to say that the board's confident in Andrea. Appreciate her efforts and appreciate the fact that you're considering the loan. So thank you.
You guys, since you've been on the current board, you guys have really made a lot of changes and get a lot more participation, I seen this, is that correct?
Yeah.
It's just serving the county.
I, I have enough information for tomorrow.
And there's still, you know, we, there's still the option to negotiate the term. We've got 60 months down here. Our policy allows for a five-year payback. I don't know if that's what everyone would want to agree to. And we still can discuss an interest rate. I wasn't sure if zero was where the board was at or, you know, our policy is prime plus 2%, which would be 5.25%. The other rate that we have thrown out in the past is the investment pool, which is .54. So that's why I use that number. So some of those probably need to be.
We, we can have some of that discussion. I'm at a zero. I'm just straightforward. That's where I'm at.
I'm just going to tell you, if we have zero, but we lose our, the interest that we acquire. We could tag maybe something on there to cover our cost. I haven't decided, but that's an option.
Yeah.
We'll hash it around while I sleep tonight.
And the, the other thing that I wanted to, to ask is, would it be better, I'll just ask, a yearly payment instead of a monthly payment? So because of not knowing your budget, knowing when your revenue streams come in and knowing all that, if, if it could be set up for yearly payment on, if you look at your budget and find out when your, your revenue streams come in, because there's months that you're, you're working on what contingency or, or what your any of the balances. So not knowing your budget or knowing your yearly thing, and you may not even know yet, Andrew, but that might be something that you might have to consider. And Ann, we, we do that, we do that with the heart tree plug.
Yes, that's what I was asking. We can have all kinds of discussions, and probably need to, about what works best here.
So you might want to think about that, can get that to Ann and to us for tomorrow? If you want to go with the yearly, if you want to go quarterly, we, we can set it up anyway.
Now that I hear that you're acceptable to that, yes. Without that, I couldn't. So thank you.
Let's, public meetings always have a little bit of pregnant time. Anyways, so if we were to do this, we wanted to, where it makes you successful, our community's successful. So it needs to be set up that, that way. We, we as commissioners, we have ownership within the senior center also, and we have a commitment there with the sales, too, and that's contractual from many years ago.
But it's not going to fail.
That's the reason why we're here today. And I'd like to, hearing you on the radio, doing the mills on wheels with you as the three commissioners did, and seeing the new energy in the senior center this last couple of months. It's very welcome. Radio ads, I hear those and everything. So I think we're going in a very positive direction, or you guys are going in a very positive direction.
Yeah, just get back to us on how you want to structure the payments. If we decide yes.
Okay.
What's his high likelihood?
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time, Steve. Thank you. Not associated with the senior center, but Steve.
Do you mind if I?
Yes, Steve, you need just a minute to announce.
Yeah, I just want to share with everybody that September 10th is going to be Warner Creek Correctional Facility's 10th Anniversary Celebration. So we opened, actually, I think the official day in 2005 was August 26th, when you cut the ribbon. Due to schedules and people's availability, we're pushing it out to September 10th to have the official celebration. And we'd like to formally invite everybody here to that celebration. Tentatively, it'll start at nine o'clock in the morning. We have our honor guard coming down to do a flag raising ceremony, our deputy director, and I don't know how many other dignitaries may be coming down, and we'll be inviting others. I'll send an official invitation to Denise for the board commissioners. We'd love to have all of you out there. And we'll have a receptionist and, or receptionist. We'll have a reception and slides projected on the wall of just things that, activities and stuff that have happened for the last 10 years. Like I think it was 2008 where we basically had to tunnel to the front door because there was so much snow. We're looking forward to the opportunity to dig that much snow again.
We think you're digging all over.
Yeah, so really looking forward to that and appreciate the support of the commissioners over the last 10 years and look forward to a fun time to get together and to celebrate that, those 10 years, so.
What time of day would that be? Does that have to be in summer, like at 3?
Nine o'clock in the morning. So you've got plenty of time, Ken, so I know you can be there now.
If you know, I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the announcement, Steve. So we will move on into our agenda. You guys are welcome to stay if you want. Our next item, Larry coming for the order of designating the newspaper.
I'll go first.
You'll go grabbing. I guess, being we have such a short agenda, Commissioner, while she's doing that, I could give you my quick days on updates. On ladies on updates, regional solutions, I'm on the executive board for regional solutions. The legislature did award dollars in Lake County in 2017. It was a million dollars to extend infrastructure through the town of Lakeview. There was an 18% reduction in that, so those dollars actually turned into $820,000, which is still a very positive thing. The other was the small communities planning and technical assistance funds. Those $250,000 was awarded. It got 18%, it's $205,000. And Betty will be doing a lot of that. I went to, I'm just doing some days on updates real fast, and I'll get through mine, and then I'll get right to you, Georgia.
No worries.
I went to the Oregon Trade, International Trade Logistics Initiative along with area manager, old area manager, Cliff Hansen, the regional director, Bob Ryan, who was in redmond last week. I represented, basically talking about rail and trying to get aid to the deep ports and along with talk about from 97, as the chair of area media of transportation, Lake and Climate, and 140. It was, it was worth my time. We made a couple of connections. It wasn't quite as much as I thought, because they're happening across the state, and that's one I was able to go to.
While you're on that subject, again, how you transport it out, been on our agenda for the last eight and a half years, it just doesn't quite pencil. But with the port of Portland shut down as far as containers, I like the difference on transport.
Yeah, and that, that's, a lot of this is based around that and the trucking industry and other things. And anxious to see when they get to the, to the end. It gets right back to my, my slogan of One Oregon. We need one Oregon, east, west side, everybody needs to have a plan so we can get through it. So I will, I have a couple others, but I will get those after we have Georgia. It has Larry down here, so. It has Larry right down there, so I'll pick up Larry. What we have is.
I'm wanting to know.
What we have is the yearly, we have to designate a newspaper, and you're coming, working with the recommendation to the board of commissioners, correct?
Correct.
And this will be for action tomorrow, I believe? Yep, so give us an update today.
Well, every year we have to publish a foreclosure list in the newspaper, and the petition says we'd like to publish it in the Examiner. It's our only newspaper of general circulation, Lakeview, and it's a weekly circulation, so. And we do this every year, and we publish it one time in the local.
How much does that cost us?
It's, it's about $2,000 a year, I think. It's, it's pretty big. But we have to do it.
You know, Georgia, I don't think that it's allowed, but I've asked Darwin, I don't know if he's checked, this is associated with our land sale because the foreclosure goes through the land sale.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I didn't know if we could recoup our cost of advertising for the foreclosure through our land sale, so.
I think that would probably be, you need to talk to county council. I don't know why you couldn't, but when the people redeem the properties, which very few of them do, because most, as you know, most of the property we foreclose on is in the Christmas Valley area. And the people that own it, when they find out there's no airport, no ocean, you know, no freeway, then they really don't want the property. And so we, most of the foreclosures are up in that area, and redemption fee is $50 to redeem it. But some of those are the publication costs. I wish we could, I wish the legislature would let us add that in at that time. We do add it in, it's 5% of the total amount due, that we do add in on the, as part of the fees. But we don't recover those costs if we propose. We only recover them if the people redeem the cost.
Well, you mentioned no airport. We do have the Christmas Valley International Airport,
Yeah.
along with Blackentire International Airport.
Make sure there's no cattle on the runway.
Blackentire is in Harney County, though.
Yeah, there is, there's no international, yeah. Or freeway, or the ocean. They called me, I don't know how close it is to the ocean.
But we do have wide open spaces.
Yeah. When they ask me how close the ocean is, I say about eight hours. We've got the sand, but the water's about eight hours away.
Yeah, they, they call me and ask about the irrigation district. Where's the irrigation district? What, what irrigation district, what river is the irrigation district? Yeah, I've had many calls like that.
Oh, really?
You drill a hole.
Most of the people that own up in that area are from California, and they buy it sight and seeing, and then.
Come up and see it?
Then they come and see it and decide, no, we don't want it. And I guess it, they don't, it doesn't matter if it hits their credit report because once that's entered in there, it hits everywhere.
So we will act on that tomorrow?
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're still very welcome.
No, we do use the Lake County Examiner as our official news media, and that costs $2,000. Of course, not everybody in Christmas Valley separate to the lake. So I'm always getting phone calls from the other two publications that's relevant up there. And I say, well, we have one. I said, can you send us that? I said, I don't mind us sharing it, but incurring another $2,000 is not.
No, that's not feasible.
But if you had the option to send it with no cost attached, it doesn't cost us anything, does it? Do you send it?
Well, for 50 cents, they could buy the paper and they could publish it themselves at their cost. That's why I like that.
Good alternative.
Yeah, they, somebody up there, the park or, they put out the newspaper and the Examiner's pretty reasonably cost, and they could just, I don't know how they would format it, put it in their paper, but.
But do we send?
Desert Whispers comes out once a month, I believe.
Twice. Community Whispers comes out once a month, first. And that's one that usually gets phone calls from.
The one month? Well, I would like to do that, but it's, it's just not cost effective.
That's the reason why we designate newspapers, the same as any other county, because you have to have one you designate for foreclosure.
And that is our primary one for the county. And I can just zip right down there and get my copies. They don't charge us. They charge us for the publication, but I can, I can wait and get as many copies as I need because I have to notify the incorporated cities, which is Paisley and Lakeview, and I send them a copy of the list. And the certified copy, you know, we have to send a lot of the stuff certified mail, and that's pretty spendy as well. So this is the new foreclosure, and this is for the 2015. It won't be deeded to the county until 2017. And I have turned over, as soon as I get the lien holder information that tells everybody that has a possible lien against the property, that we also notify by regular and certified mail. I do give a copy of that to the building planning department so they can see what was against it because all of that is wiped out once we redeem the county. Once I submit that deed, then we're the primary, and it doesn't matter if there's second, third, first, whatever mortgages against it, they are gone. So that's how that works. It's pretty lengthy and it's a pretty spendy process.
We appreciate all the work that goes into it.
I always have three years of foreclosures, one on deeding, one on notifying lien holders, and one on starting. So we always have. So we always have three years of foreclosures going at the same time, so. Lot of work.
Thank you, Georgia.
Thank you, guys, for your, thanks so much.
Yep.
And, um, will Jim be here tomorrow? If only he can sign some of the documents. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you, George.
Our next item would be our addition ordinance one oh four, attachment aid correction. Commissioner, I would, I don't know if you've seen the permission on that yet. It's straightforward. I'm looking for mine now. Here it is. I believe that it is something we can just act on it to typo. Do you have it?
No.
No, I got it.
You should have had it.
What we have is whenever we've done our ATV ordinance, there was a typo on the road. That is, that is to be, to remain open for use. And the typo is, it says five twelve C, and it should say five fourteen C, so.
A little bit of correction. Yes, I heard you correct. It identifies the roads that are closed.
Yes, and this, Milliken Road is closed, but it also, I'm sorry, I probably said that wrong. So Milliken Road, five twelve C, um, is the wrong number. It should be five fourteen C, and then after that, it says five twelve D portion remains open for use. So it's showing closed. The new number would be five fourteen C, and after that, it's talking about the portion that remains open.
You've got the map here for it. It's Milliken Road from Christmas Valley all the way to the sinks. That's closed. Milliken Road continues as five twelve D bumping over to, to the highway twenty. That remains open.
Yep. So this, this is the number that we have wrong.
Yes, yes.
Supposed to be five fourteen C.
Yep.
So.
Just a quick little correction to our ordinance.
So I'll make a motion to correct our ordinance typo. So Milliken Road is represented as the correct number, which is five fourteen C.
As being closed.
As being closed.
Our second motion.
Motion's been made. Second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Now, while we're on the same subject, we're, we're working with Redmond Darwin to get our ordinance, these roads that are closed, onto a map, so that people are allowed to have a visual. But that's gonna be a few weeks out yet.
Okay, so we have no, if we, either one of you have a quick department update, either one of you be in the news.
I just have a quick one, um, on IT side. Yesterday, I did, um, have Commissioner customer signing agreements with LSN. They are our fiber connection provider for our connection between the courthouse and the annex, um, to increase the bandwidth to cover, um, backups and cameras, installation of cameras, so. Just so that that's noted. It is an additional twenty-four dollars a month. While we're currently, so, just so everybody is aware.
I know you're just on the contractual part of IT, we're learning, when you, as Dave mentioned, when the cameras would be up and operational there.
He has, uh, I can touch base with him.
Yep, that's a question for Dave, not for the contract administrator.
Well, we need to make sure we have the bandwidth for the cameras, so.
Right, so it's getting much closer.
The next couple days, so, I don't know on these cameras. But I will check. Long story short, I'll check.
Do you have anything, any, how many news is going on?
Not a lot above and beyond the report that I sent to you all last week. The only thing I wanted to highlight is, um, I've been working to, um, discover an active, um, helpful project in the northern part of the county. And there's two things. I've been working with, um, Dave Staub about the, the gas station, trying to keep, I mean, that's a pretty critical piece for him in Silver Lake.
Absolutely.
And the recent legislation that will allow very rural communities to keep their gas station open from six to six, six P M. to six A M. with a credit card. He is not feeling like that really helped them all that much, so he's continuing to keep the station open three days a week. They've got certain hours and certain days, and I don't remember what they are. But he is also looking at, um, extending some of the services in the station so that he can make it more attractive, possibly for someone to lease. And he was just waiting to see what the legislature was gonna do. It could be that if that happens, then it may be that option of six P M. to six A M. may still be good. But he's been very amenable, you know, originally he was just gonna close it, and I kinda said, oh my gosh, you know, what other, what are the other options? And he has been very amenable to try and work something out, which is good.
Good work.
The other piece that, um, has come to my attention, and I mentioned something to Ken about it, and is, they're really struggling in Silver Lake with the fire district in terms of volunteers and EMTs getting people, and Tom, Sheriff, Deputy Sheriff Tom, has worked really hard. He's starting to get some younger people, even some high school students, involved, and I think that, um, they could use some support. So I'm gonna talk to Tom, see if there's some kind of planning support or something that I might be able to extend to help them with that effort. They're a very aging department in terms of their, their, um, employees, or not employees, but their volunteers, and, um, they could use some help. Christmas Valley, you know, they have a little bit of the same issue, but not, not quite like, um, Silver Lake. And Summer Lake is really trying to make decisions about whether or not they want to become a district, so that's another place that I might be able to put some effort. And I also just discovered the yurt company. Does anybody know about the yurt company in Summer Lake? I'm gonna, next time I'm up there, there is this fabulous company that is manufacturing, producing, selling, has been for quite sometimes some really amazing, uh, yurts that are quite, um, if you go online, I can't, I'll have to look. I'll send you a link to go and look. But that was a new economic development piece, or new business that I discovered. Then they've been very quietly working away up there, producing these and shipping them out and selling them and going to fairs. And how I discovered them is that they were at the mosquito festival, and they had a couple of yurts, um, set up, and it's pretty amazing.
I wasn't aware of that.
I know, me neither, and.
There's a picture on Facebook of them, and, oh my gosh.
Aren't they amazing? They're beautiful, and they're very, um, user friendly in terms of putting them up, so I'm gonna go check that out and see, you know, how, what kind of, um, support they might be able, or they might need. I think they're doing fine. I don't know that they need any help, but I was really excited to see that there's something, it's very innovative and, and creative.
Where are they located? They're in Summer Lake, is it?
They're in Summer Lake, in that area somewhere. I'm not exactly sure where. Not on the main drag. They're off, off the main drags, someplace like that.
Interesting.
I'll go find out, yeah.
It was gorgeous. The pictures I saw were beautiful.
They're beautiful, yeah.
What dimensions? Any custom?
Uh, they, they have different dimensions. I don't know exactly, but they're, they go from, um, probably about the size of this room, um, a little bit smaller than the size of this room, to much bigger.
Interesting.
Yeah.
That could be, get my cabin.
I know, that's.
Exactly, but I think, I know three of us went that direction.
Yeah, I did, I, I have, yes.
Is it all pack rat proof?
No, I don't think anything's pack rat.
No, or windproof out there.
Okay.
That's good news.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. That was, you're good?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
All right, and we do appreciate the print, or the emails that show what you're working on.
Sure.
So moving on down, get through liaison updates. I'll finish mine. Um, I got through the Oregon trade that I went to. The other thing, uh, museum, and Amy worked on this, and we've all worked back and forth. I've been, uh, DAR came to me this week, one lady from DAR, and they're still.
Struggling.
Struggling on the Spink site. Um, the Lake County Museum and myself and the DAR, the Spink will all meet this Friday and try to work on some kind of resolution for our community, um, just in the first talking stage of, but there's so much history in the Spink Museum, local history and knowledge and, and things that's, that's in there that needs to be.
Retained here.
Preserved and retained here, and I know I'm just singing into the fire, I'm just.
But, what it is.
Yeah, just letting people know that, um, there's discussion happening.
Yeah, good.
Other thing, I've been working with, uh, Red Rock on the negotiations and so forth, back and forth. Not a lot to be, uh, put out there yet, but still working on that. Slash NAP, we have slash Red Rock, and that's a weekly updates and everything. There's some folks on a lot of their permitting and stuff. Amy had worked on that, and that's about it. Um, our Steve mentioned that September tenth, the ten year anniversary of Department Corrections being here. And so that's, that's all liaison updates I have.
Yeah, and we cannot wear blue jeans when we go.
No, you cannot wear blue jeans there.
Really?
No, because the inmates wear blue pants.
They do have some sweats you can put over your blue jeans in worst case scenario. Hasn't happened to me, but it has to a few. Okay, Ken, do you have anything?
Well, on the SageCon and Sage Rouse stuff, that has pretty much concluded until we get going on SageCon two. Basically, what that entailed was the high potential of the Sage Rouse being listed by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. Fish and Wildlife Service has made the statement that the Grand Rouse is warranted for listing. And this various states have been working to kind of shore up how we deal with, uh, Sage Rouse habitat, land use permitting and stuff on non-federal lands. And the state LCD, Land Conservation and Development Department, been the kind of lead to give some guidance to the county planning. And it involved coming up with, um, Oregon administrative rules, which none of us like new rules. But it came down to a case of which of the worst two hevers can you live with? I was in favor of it for that superior reason, because if we don't come up with the own rules and we get listed, uh, U S Fish and Wildlife Service would administer the Endangered Species Act across eastern Oregon, and they would look at all factors. On the LCD, it specifically excluded agriculture use exempt, exempt, because it's covered underneath O R S. Uh, if we didn't show the Fish and Wildlife Service that we had adequate, uh, rules in place, and they came down, they would actually address agriculture also. So that was a real pivotal point for me, is protecting our ag base. To implement that, ODFW, who came here, said we're skilled, uh, for the public hearing. Basically, if the, if somebody come in with a large scale development, it's not a house, or an outhouse or something like that, but a large scale. And we denoted it as five acres. The next step, if it's in critical habitat, then the state, our planner would call in, ODFW, come in and make recommendations on the reneur adjusting or mitigating. And on July twenty-third and twenty-fourth, the commission that oversees LCD met in Burns, and they made some adjustments right at the end. But they approved, so those O A Rs will be in effect in August. The following Monday in Salem, the commission over ODFW met, and with some adjustment, they admitted, they approved the O A Rs for ODFW. So we're hoping that we can convince the U S Fish and Wildlife Service that we manage adequately, so don't get listing. I'm hesitant, because Fish and Wildlife Service had to look at Nevada, Idaho, eleven other states. And if the other states are not as proactive as Oregon, they're listed. But if we, this backup to that is, if it is listed, then hopefully we can convince the U S Fish and Wildlife Service to give us a full D rule. Full D rule means state, you got a program sufficient, you manage underneath your program. And again, that would exempt ag. So that's kind of the status. I'm kind of writing up a, uh, little dissertation to give to you, Jimmy. But it got to be three pages yesterday, so I did cut it down.
So, um, so the, both the commission and LCD see the.
Both commissions of ODFW and LCD.
So they did adopt.
Yes.
So I, did they send out what, um.
The finals?
Changes they made?
I haven't seen the finals yet, but that's on my mind yet.
Yeah.
And also the effective date.
Yeah, I'd really like to see, because I put quite a bit of effort to both of them. See, see, I, I guess, see if they already had everything pre-decided, or if they did listen to us a little bit.
There were just some minor, minor adjustments.
Yeah, I, in other words, they just went through a process. They already had it decided.
Yeah.
Which I shouldn't, I'll go ahead with your updates, everybody.
Let's see. Oh, last Sunday was a previous county commissioner's dinner service at Summer Lake. George Collin, he passed away a quick, so I'll go. U S F Commissioner back in, early nineties, I believe.
Very good commissioner in several, several terms, I can't.
Highly respected. It was a very large turnout.
Yes, I, I was not able to attend. I was doing a horse show with my granddaughter.
Under that.
I knew that you and Ken both, or you and Dan both were there, counties representative.
Yeah, I was there with the F W.
Oh, yeah.
Covered that part. He was a World War Two vet.
He was a wonderful person.
Oh, let's see. Next week, on Thursday or Friday, there's a Oregon Education and Fashion Board Regional Achievement Collaborative Summit in Metford. I had the summit a year ago, and being in a mist, it's, and Bob Nash is, and if you think, or Keenan on it too. That program is, if a county comes up with some program to help education, it can be preschool, kindergarten, elementary, high school, whatever. And we're still trying to work to shore up our preschool program here in Lake County. So Bob and I have been working on a proposal that we're gonna maybe get some funding to get that off the ground. On it, it's out there a couple weeks, but this month, Eastern Oregon CCO meeting us in Enterprise, so I'm gonna be down a couple days on that. It'll leave you about a forest to cut.
They're just training again.
They are. That really can be notorious.
Can you teleconference or anything on those?
I could. I don't like teleconferencing, because you don't really, you know, like much.
But that's a decision you have to make, depending on the meeting, but, my gosh, the enterprise, that's.
Well, I haven't been to Enterprise in thirty years, so.
I used to live there.
Did you? Also, one other thing, our Economic Advisory Committee for the county did meet, and they came up with a recommendation that we consider forty-second group as economic advantage now that the measure nine has been found. That's what I've got.
Okay, yeah, I, I was to the forty-second group website today.
There's not a whole lot there.
Doesn't give any information for all the things that are being said here locally.
Yeah, what have you, it's a free enterprise business, sink or swim.
Yeah, yeah, I.
But we have yet to make a decision.
Right, right.
But that's a recommendation of the.
We've seen a lot of investor developers through the solar time.
Well, most startup businesses, probably nine out of ten don't quite make it. But one out of ten does.
So we do have SCOED, our, it starts out with SCOAC, SCOED next week, starts at ten o'clock on Friday in Commerce Falls. We do have that next week. Um, the following week, um, I'm Monday through. We do have that next week, the following week, I'm, Monday through Friday, I plan on maybe not be in here.
What day is that?
The seventeenth, Tuesday, twenty-first. I do have a mental tag, so it depends on my success, whether I'll be here those days or not.
I will.
I'm hopeful I'm successful on the weekend.
Yeah, okay, I agree.
So.
Well, you should be back at house and working the blood off by nine thirty.
I'm hoping so, I'm hoping so.
Now, is that the week we have a court case?
The, the, well, there was supposed to be a trial that week, but surely you got the email from Robert Franz. And on the nineteenth, he meets with the judge for trial date and possible change of date.
I've been a little bit behind on the emails.
Oh, okay, well, now you're aware.
Yeah, good.
So none of us have received a subpoena, so at this time.
Good.
Analysts, season's over?
Yes.
I think that's all I have.
Probably we need to touch base with you on those agenda things, because we do have some items.
Oh, is that, that is a meeting week?
Yeah, the nineteenth.
I will, I will make the meetings.
Okay.
I, yeah, I'll make the meetings, even if I'm not successful.
Okay.
I'll make the meetings.
And we have a work session late.
Yeah, yeah, we have those, those meetings.
Yeah, so.
Heather and I do have court on the eighteenth.
All right, any other dates, some things we need to, with that, we will adjourn at eight minutes to ten.
Less than an hour.